Okay, so good morning everyone and welcome back for day two of the Summer Jadoo Academy 2020. So kicking off today with a session on emerging technology use at Swindon Borough Council, which is presented by Sally Moss, Senior Business Improvement Manager. Slightly differently to advertise, we've needed to pre-record Sally's presentation with her yesterday as her internet connection just wasn't allowing her to run a live presentation effectively for us today. But Sally has managed to join in the conversation by phone today. So she is online with us here, so we're going to go ahead and play the video for us. Sally, I don't know if you just want to pop online and just maybe just say hello to folks?
Yep, hi everyone. Hopefully you can hear me. I'm sitting on the road at the moment on the phone. Twice, once live and once recorded because I added an introduction to the start of the recording as well. So yeah, hopefully, hopefully you'll enjoy the presentation and I will dial in again at the end to answer any questions that anyone might have, fingers crossed anyway, technology permitting.
Thanks for that Sally. We've also got Sarah Talbot on the line as well. Should we, should we need to get into any kind of technical questions that may come up from the emerging technology use that the council have had? So she'll also be available for the Q and A as well. So please do ask your questions as we go through the session because we will, we will put the team at the end. And as usual, please do join the conversation, you know, use the Jadoo Academy hashtag. We'll share the recording afterwards and yeah, we'll hit the Q and A. So without further ado, I'm going to hit play on the video and I hope everyone enjoys it and I'll watch out for those questions.
Hello everyone, my name is Sally Moss, I'm the Senior Business Improvement Manager here at Swindon Borough Council. Unfortunately, yeah, I'm not able to present this live to you today. My internet speed was just not quite up to the task, so I've had to pre-record this presentation for you. But as you've probably seen from the blurb, I've been with Swindon Borough Council for coming up to about 10 years now. Always working in business improvement, but in various different areas of the business. And I'm here to talk to you today about Swindon Borough Council's digital evolution. So yeah, we've come on quite a journey recently and yeah, I'd just like to take you through that today. So our journey started with our procurement of the Jadoo platform in April 2005 with our content management system and our online forms. And we undertook a lift and shift exercise to move all of our customer-facing forms from our previous CRM onto Jadoo. Then came the development of the Swindon Programme, which was a three-year savings programme divided into four work streams. And as part of that, the Digital Hub project was a platform for digitising and redesigning all of our paper-heavy and manual processes around the organisation. The project kicked off, I think it was in December 2016, when we added CXM functionality to the, to the system and began our partnership with Consultants Methods and the recruitment of the project team. So Methods helped us with design our project approach and identify upfront where the biggest opportunities for savings and efficiencies were. They also supported us, as did Jadoo, in training up the new project team and defining our project governance. The team were all trained up in agile project management. Enabled us to work at pace and deliver quick wins along the way, that was the plan. And this quickly developed into what we called the Swindon Wadzile approach as we sort of took a blend and elements of the agile project management that worked best for us. But we also incorporated some of the more traditional aspects of the waterfall approach. Hub team with us identifying the areas where the most opportunity was and working with those service areas to define how they could deliver savings and then going on to write business cases which were reviewed and signed off by the design authority for the project. However, we did identify about halfway through the project that this wasn't quite the most efficient way to progress this. It was, it was only up taking too long to realise the benefits. So then we switched over halfway through to a more serviced approach, agreeing the budget reductions across the board and then letting the service areas take the lead on how they wanted to receive those savings and which areas they, they needed and wanted our support to improve. And this led to a much greater buy-in from the service areas to help them embed the new ways of working and also front-loaded the achievement of the savings targets. So that was a much better approach for us. So a bit more about the Swindon Programme and the results that we achieved. There were four key performance measures that were developed for driving the programme. The first one obviously was the cost savings. We identified we needed to save £30 million in 30 months across the organisation. Although obviously for the Digital Hub project, only 8.6 million of this was specifically aligned to that project. The second aspect was to increase our digital channel shift. So moving online and away from the more traditional and expensive aspects of phone calls, emails and face-to-face interactions with customers. Our baseline figures at the start for online interactions were, at the time was 8.5%. So we had a very ambitious target that was set to increase this to 85%. And this was recognising that there would still always be the more elderly or vulnerable residents who would need or prefer to engage with us through traditional channels due to not having the required technology or not knowing how to go online. So yeah, that was, that was the second one. The third one, at the time, we had a heavy reliance on paper processes, which was driving a paper usage of 15 million sheets per year. So the target was set to redesign and digitise those processes to try and get down to just 1 million sheets per year. And then the final focus of the project was on our customer experience and the customer journey. And it was to increase the efficiency of our processes, both for the customers and for our back office staff by being able to get things right first time. So that when we interacted with residents, they knew exactly what information was required from them upfront and it could be provided at that first point of contact to reduce the need to go back and gather any additional information. This also meant the customers are kept better informed along the way. And if they were applying for a service that they weren't eligible for, then they would know that upfront before they actually needed to spend time completing the full application form. So that made it a lot better for them, also better for the service because they, they weren't trying to process forms that actually ended up with no further action. The programme also enabled us to design processes which allowed people to pay online for services upfront. So this also saved a lot of time in the back office in allocating payments to various different things. So how did we get on? Well, our results, you can see here, gives you a bit of a clue, but we, we achieved the target of 30 million savings in 30 months. And generally, the project was very successful whilst we didn't hit every milestone and measure that we set, but we did a pretty good job. So as I say, we reached our savings target across the organisation and with, in terms of online interactions, we've achieved a very healthy result of 68% of our online interactions from that initial 8.5. We're still working on that to deliver even more online options for our residents and to identify those processes which haven't led to channel shift yet. And in some cases, we're working with our residents to identify what improvements need to be made to those online processes to encourage them to make better use of them. So yes, you'll see from the, from the slide there that with the print rationalisation, we actually didn't manage to get quite down to the 1 million sheets, but we have so far achieved a reduction down to 4 million sheets per year, which is a drastic reduction and a huge achievement. And obviously, this has been significantly helped recently by lockdown with no one being in the office to use the printers and everyone having to adapt to a more, to more digital processes and opportunities anyway. So what's, what's, how have we continued the journey? So since we closed down the Digital Hub project in 2019, in June, we haven't sat back on our laurels and we've been continuing to review and redesign processes and further develop our knowledge and understanding of the Jadoo product and how it can best support our aims for achieving efficiency. As mentioned, we've started gathering feedback from customers about how we can improve those digital processes and streamline that customer journey to iron out any pain points that then the new online forms have caused for residents. Obviously, it's a, it's a learning process and we're, we're learning all the time. We also started asking our staff about what causes them pain and frustration around the organisation. And that identified some corporate processes which were inefficient and time-consuming to complete. And as a result, we've recently redesigned our complaints process, making it much more efficient for customers to raise complaints or even compliments and also for staff to respond to those. We now have a much better data reporting to track and review complaints and therefore identify when we start getting an increase across a certain service area. So our staff survey also identified that the expense claims process was slow and manual and relied on having to get a manager to actually physically sign, sign a piece of paper to, to, to process it. As did raising a paper purchase orders and approving them for payment. So these two processes have now been moved online so that staff can fill out and submit a digital form which workflows through to their manager or approve signatory and then through to the back office team for processing. These developments were also very significant in helping us to manage during the lockdown imposed by COVID-19. So yeah, that was really helpful. The recruitment process was also identified by existing staff and new recruits as being very slow and convoluted. So Methods are currently supporting us to rebuild this process in Jadoo. And we've also redesigned and automated our starters, levers and movers process to ensure that everyone around the organisation is notified and takes the required action when staff either join, leave or move around the organisation. Talking, talking about COVID-19, obviously that's been a big, big factor. And our response to COVID-19 obviously was been part of our digital evolution. In some ways, we were fortunate that we were quite well-prepared as an organisation at the start of this year. Before the onslaught of COVID-19, we had big plans to roll out Microsoft Teams to the whole organisation over the course of 12 months. And this was set to be a huge programme of work and involving consultants to help us bring staff on board and encourage and support them to use the, this system. But obviously then when lockdown hit, this programme had to be significantly accelerated and delivered within a matter of weeks to enable staff to continue effectively working from home. And thanks to the sheer hard work and determination of our IT projects team, this was delivered successfully and everyone in SBC has had to jump on board with using teams in order to carry out their roles from home every day. Another project that, that had been planned in advance of COVID was a virtual post room. This project set various stumbling blocks along the way with services not keen to adopt to the new way of working. But obviously with COVID, this was the only option for mail to be opened, scanned and sent across to the addressee by email. So that's definitely an improvement which will be kept when we return to the new normal. And our familiarity with the Jadoo product was also really positive during this period as it put us in a really strong position to be able to respond quickly to the new requirements of lockdown, signing and developing new processes in response to these urgent needs that kept arising. The newly adopted approach to needs during this period involved a project teams being set up around each particular need with staff from various different areas of the business who all had their role to play in ensuring the processes and the products were delivered at pace and to the right level of quality. And one key benefit brought about by this new virtual way of working has been, been a real focus and attention to detail. I think probably everyone listening to this has experienced the same thing that that virtual meetings tend to be quicker and more to the point with decisions being reached by the end of each session in, in ways that face-to-face meetings often didn't manage to achieve. The sense of urgency created by COVID led to people taking accountability for decision-making and working together to agree a solution to problems as they arose rather than sort of defending their own agenda or cause. There's been a real sense of community spirit and everyone's really pulled together to achieve the same goals, no matter what it takes basically. So yeah, a bit more about what we actually, what we actually did. So lots of processes developed mostly through Jadoo because obviously we had the benefit of being ahead of the game with that. So yeah, here are some of the processes we developed at pace in response to our, support our residents during COVID. There was the application process to allow small businesses to apply for support grants to see them through the lockdown period. That was very successful and in the first two weeks, we'd received over 1,700 applications and paid out over 20 million in funds to eligible businesses. And obviously, a key factor of that process was to make sure that people applying were actually eligible for that money. That was a very important aspect. We rolled out two processes to support our shielded residents. So there was one reactive emergency process for anyone calling into our contact centre to request urgent support, which was then worked, workflow through to our Live Well team in Public Health to coordinate the response. And then there was another more proactive process to, to manage the thousands of support calls that staff and volunteers were, were making to our vulnerable, shielded residents. This was to check in that they, that they were okay and whether there was any additional support that they needed. So we created a simple online form for residents to report any local businesses who weren't following the lockdown procedures. We also produced a digital purchase order form for staff to continue to be able to raise orders for, for goods and services and also to, to back on to that, a digital invoice process to enable these to be paid for. As previously, our purchase order and invoice processes were very manual and paper-heavy and they required a physical signature from authorised staff members, so, which obviously wasn't achievable during lockdown. So we worked with partners to, to design and deliver also an adult safeguarding referral form to enable practitioners to be able to easily report any safeguarding concerns. And this was another positive example of something difficult being made a bit easier by unusual lockdown circumstances with the urgent need encouraging different partner organisations to work collaboratively together and make timely decisions. So we also developed a quick and easy process to be able to register volunteers at pace to manage the significantly increased demand because during the period, we had over 500 local residents who wanted to provide help and support to others. So we needed a way to be able to quickly get them registered so that they could provide that help where it was needed. Other processes which were designed and developed in Jadoo were our COVID-19 risk assessments. We also had a process to support the redeployment hub. So where staff couldn't do their normal roles anymore and also couldn't work from home in that role, then they were redeployed to other areas of the business where they could offer their support. So and then there was also response pages on the website under the banner of Here for Swindon, which detailed everything that was going on in relation to COVID-19. There was a simple place for people to, to find all the information and a similar sort of setup was done on the internet pages for, for staff as well. So obviously, that was the response. Now we're, we're getting towards recovery phase now. So yeah, the road to recovery. So how, how have we made best use of the situation? So we've relied on digital solutions during this period, obviously, to support the road to recovery. So examples of that are using a smart survey to reach out to all staff during lockdown. We wanted to check in on them and how they were feeling, what issues they were experiencing, whether they needed any additional support or equipment to facilitate this new working from home. We also used Jadoo again to create a process for service areas to be able to report the positives and the negatives of lockdown so that as an organisation, we could capture the positive new ways of working that had been adopted and respond to the difficulties to ensure they, they were addressed and to understand and prepare for what business needs there would be to enable us to return to the new normal when the time came. So all services were required to complete a gateway review form, which was then reviewed by Silver Group to coordinate a strategic approach and to start with identifying which areas of the business would need to return as soon as possible and which would be able to continue working from home. So this led on to team-level risk assessments to understand how those services that did need to come back could do so safely, could return to the workplace and what practices and, and equipment would need to be incorporated on a day-to-day basis to ensure that this safety. We're now coming to the end of this process and some teams will be slowly starting to return from about August. But for a lot of us, working from home is looking like it might be the new normal with a few minor adjustments and a bit of technology support. So partnership working has also been a, a big factor in our success during this period. We've been working collaboratively with new tech providers, consultancy firms such as NDTI and Methods. They've supported us to be able to see the, the bigger picture and to try out new ways of working that have been perhaps trialled in other authorities already as a way to manage increasing demand in a more efficient and cost-effective way. There's been a really concerted push to ensure that the positives from this situation aren't lost and that those lessons learned are captured and implemented across other areas of the business or continue to beyond the life of this global pandemic. An example of this is the decision to develop a booking system in Jadoo to enable the reopening of our household waste recycling centre. So obviously, that was partly shut down during COVID and we needed to reopen. But previously, with the centre had often experienced quite heavy demand causing queues outside of the site and issues with traffic. So we wanted to very much avoid this happening again and understood that there would be very high demand for, for this service as soon as it opened up. So we decided that bookings, appointments booking process was, was the best way to go for us. So yeah, this actually, this process has been very successful. There was massive demand. We did crash our website a couple of times in the early days, but, but the things have settled down now and the process is really working well and the service area have decided to adopt this on a long-term basis now. And our emerging tech team are already looking into ways to make this more manageable and sustainable in the long term and to be able to fully automate the process from end to end. Because at the moment, the, the front-end is automated, but the back-end requires operatives onsite checking cars in and out of the site and making sure that they do have a genuine appointment booked. So yeah, obviously, that, that leads me now neatly on to the emerging technologies and what we've been adopting here at Swindon. As part of our digital journey, we've, we've set up a new emerging technologies project team, which is funded to go out and seek new digital opportunities to investigate and develop proof-of-concept stages. Our first foray into this brave new world has been with robotic process automation in partnership with, with providers NDL. We've designed and delivered our first robot at Swindon Borough Council to support our business support unit in dealing with the massive 2,000% increase in demand for free school meals applications. Previously, staff had to review each application and go into several different IT systems to check against eligibility of applicants before the, the application could be processed. And this is now fully automated with a robot undertaking the task of, on a 24/7 basis and staff only having to manage any exceptions that are thrown up. And obviously, without this use of emerging tech, there's probably no way at all that staff would have been able to cope with that massive spike in demand. Whereas now the applications take 97% less time to process. We've also rolled out a new and improved reporting process for flight tipping, which has seen an increase during lockdown as well. Restrictions were put in place and, and the household waste recycling centre was temporarily closed down. This process uses AI and machine, machine learning with image recognition to enable residents to report flight tipping and upload a photo which machine learning can then use to identify the size of the load, which is then integrated with route optimisation to enable the team to efficiently plan collection and incidents around the borough. It also enables residents to pinpoint on a map the exact location of the flight tipping and to see where reports have already been logged. Then business intelligence is used to provide geolocational reports on high-level incidents across the borough. So during the pilot of this project, we received 96% positive feedback from residents that the process was much improved from what was available before. So that the next emerging tech investigation, if you like, is to moving on to looking at sentiment analysis to see whether artificial intelligence can be used to identify the overall feeling, mood behind social media messages and sense whether the, the general mood is positive or negative towards a subject matter. And then what technology is best paced to, to fully automate are the new household waste recycling booking process as well. So that's the, the next phase after that, as I say, to, to enable that, the removal of those staff that are currently required to check people in and out of the site. So what's next, you might ask, with all these emerging technologies? So I mentioned earlier about the gateway review process, which was designed and delivered to help capture some of the, the positives and negatives that service areas had experienced during the lockdown period and what areas for improvement that managers had identified that would need to be worked on once we've achieved that sort of return to work situation. This information was all collated and combined with the feedback from staff and the individual questionnaire responses to help inform and shape our next programme of work, which is basically about supporting the organisation to become modern, efficient and effective by sort of 2022 ideally. This highlighted corporate processes that, that we still have that require an element of manual processing or printing a paper, such as some of our IT help desk processes and our finance and HR tasks, which, which need to be redesigned and streamlined to automate as many steps as possible on, on the, in the process. It also highlighted areas of the business that would benefit from mobile working opportunities and those that are now able to work effectively from home but require some elements of improved software applications or system access. So our next step is to prioritise and plan out this schedule of work to ensure that we can meet these needs using the range of digital tools available to us whilst also helping to achieve our next round of savings targets. So another thing that, that's part of this journey really is a customer interaction, is a big focus. We've had some really positive engagement with residents over this period, which is important to hold on to and in finding ways to incorporate this more into our sort of day-to-day working and the development of processes and services. So an example of where this is working well is, is the feedback on, on digital forms where residents are asked to provide feedback on their experience of completing a form, which as I say, was definitely used in the new flight tipping reported form. What we really want to do next is to take this a step further and see where we can actually involve residents in, in helping us design those processes and forms upfront rather than just providing feedback after we've designed them. So it, another aspect to that is recognising that actually a large proportion of our staff are also residents. So there's a great opportunity there for them to get involved in helping to design and test new initiatives and ideas. So yeah, we're looking for ways to be able to tap into that. Flexible and digital working is, is also going to form a big part of the new normal now. With many things across the council being identified as no longer requiring their roles to be undertaken from a central office space. Technology has enabled them to stay connected with each other and their customers virtually from home, which means we no longer have the same requirement for, for multiple office buildings and can look at rationalising our estates even further and thinking about how else some of those buildings can be used and where those teams that do require a physical base, where do they most need to be located to be most effective? Whilst we've definitely come on a long journey towards digitisation and our evolution is, is well underway, we, we've already achieved so much, but it's clear that there's still a long road ahead of us and much more opportunity to realise and harness. Realistically, the journey isn't going to have an ending really. There'll always be room for improvement and technology will always continue to advance and provide new and exciting opportunities. So our key focus now is to look inwardly at how we lay the stepping stones for the organisation to continuously improve and to upskill and train all staff across the organisation to be able to look at how they do things day-to-day and identify and identify ways to do them quicker, better, smarter, more efficiently and to a better quality. So yeah, that's that's the next focus now. So that's all from me today in terms of my presentation. But obviously, I'm very happy to take questions and also hopefully have my colleague Sarah Talbot, who manages our emerging tech project team, on hand to support with any of the more technical questions that any of you may have. And obviously, this is this presentation is pre-recorded, but I will be dialing in live, so I will be able to hopefully answer some of your questions live. So thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm just going to give it a minute, just in case the video is still running for anyone. And then we'll dig into some of the questions. Okay, so hopefully you're you're still there Sally and able to. Excellent, excellent news. Okay, so we've had a few questions come in, so I'll read those out for you. I might know the answer to the first one, so I might be able to give you a bit of a hand. So the first one from John Paul Ken is, what payment engine are you using? Do you integrate with Jadoo forms? I think the answer to that one is Capita for online payments and first capital cash flow for for direct debit. Is that is that right?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that sounds about right.
I think that's the case.
Paybridge springs to mind as well.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the the software that you got from Jadoo that integrates with Capita. So yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the that's the case to answer that particular question. Another question from John is, what AI tech are you using for fly tipping and photo analysis?
That's definitely one for Sarah.
Yep. Sarah, are you able to unmute yourself and take that one? If not, I can move on. You found it.
Found the button. It's always useful for emerging tech, isn't it? Hi everyone. So what we are doing, there's a number of things around these. In terms of the tech reason, but Jadoo data that goes in with S3 buckets and we're using image recognition. We're using Apple and Google and direction and then also done conversational networks for proactive identification of holes. And we've got to tune in the background around the fly tipping, referencing volume and quantities so that we can load the van up correctly. So the image recognition is analysing photo, but off of that we're also doing calculations around volume and weight. I hope that answers your question, but if you need any more info, I'm quite happy to to hook up on a separate conversation.
Okay, thanks for that description, Sarah. David Cooper also asks, well, similar, what software did you use for the fly tipping? Also, are you using AWS for the sentiment analysis?
So hopefully the previous statement covers the but again, the office, if you want to hook up and see what we're doing. I guess the only thing I did miss out is we use an internal system called iChef for mapping, which has all our kind of parish and borough boundaries. And so we're also using that to do like auto reassignment, where it's parish responsibility. And the team have tablets, so they're doing photographic seeing of action, which also feeds back into Jadoo and back out to the customer and they're closing cases live offsite. With regards to sentiment analysis, we've done a little bit with the Microsoft side, we've done some within AWS and then we did some Python comparisons as well. We did a bit of a technology broad scope on on that one to look at using different elements. Again, I've got more data and info on that if you want it.
Excellent. Thanks for that description. Simon Owen, I think this one's probably more for Sally. With regards to the booking for for household waste, how did this prevent long queues of customers and how did you ensure booking times were met? Or was there slippage as customers turn up early and cause unnecessary queuing?
Yeah, for that one, I mean, we gave very clear instructions on the on the form and the website for what people needed to do. We we allowed half hour slots. We felt that was that was long enough for people to to get through the site, empty their stuff and move out of the site again. And it's been a bit experimental in terms of gradually increasing the number of slots that we make available as we prove operationally that, you know, the site can manage and get those those cars and vans moving through it within the required timeframe. The 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 reduction in queues is caused by the fact that people just are informed to turn up only 15 minutes ahead of their slot time, no before. Whereas before we had a booking system, you know, in busy periods of the year, you know, there was no control over who went to the site and when. And there were definitely situations of of long queues while people were waiting to access the site and get off again. So it definitely managing the timeframes of how many people are arriving at the site within a particular timeframe has definitely helped with that that factor.
Okay. A question from Andrew Howe, what process system do you use to track your transactions across all channels to give you the 68% of online transactions figure that you mentioned in your presentation there, Sally?
So we mostly use obviously Jadoo for that, but we also, I think, our customer service teams have linking with Qmatics, so that the the different data from the different systems is pulled together using Power BI dashboard to present all those figures back on a monthly basis.
Okay, I guess a follow on question from me really. I mean, you you mentioned in your presentation that you're looking to get the extra 20%, I think it was. I think you're going from 68 to your target is 85. I mean, what what the council now intending to do to try and get that extra 20%?
So we're looking at our high volume interactions where we've got an online form and we're still getting high face to face and phone options. We're going to start talking to customers to understand what it is that that makes them prefer to use the the phone or or face to face for those issues and whether we can improve the form to encourage more people to use it. There's still some areas of the business where we don't have an online presence yet, which we're which we're working on developing so that we can get those last last few areas. And also considering where there might be areas where we have an online form at the moment, but it's not compulsory to use, we're considering whether or not we can move some some of those interactions solely to the online form and remove the the phone and and face to face options. So there's a range of different things that we're looking at there.
Okay, interesting. And you you mentioned on a few occasions in your in your presentation really that the problem of of wet or paper signatures, it seems like that cropped up on on a few occasions for you. I mean, how how did you choose to overcome that? Was it, did you take an approach of like asking on the form for people to to type in their name again or to tick a checkbox? Or did you implement some kind of digital signature solution or or what were the faults in that?
Well, it was mostly through where we were then using Jadoo forms. Obviously, you've got you've got the sign in aspect for the audit trail to understand, you know, who you can prove who is actually using the using the form and logged into the form. So then, yeah, it's just just getting them to to pop their name in digitally. And in some cases where we felt we needed it, there's a sort of declaration to confirm that, you know, I am the person, I say I am, and that I I am providing information, you know, to its truest extent. So there's a range of different options, but I mean, it was, I suppose necessity is the driver really. Suddenly, when you can't actually get people face to face together to to sign things off, then you need to, you know, reconsider your options and find another way of doing things.
Yeah, sure. Okay. And you you mentioned lessons learned and the new in terms of the new normal with things like the the new bookings process you had to implement with the waste refuse sites. Can you speak of any of those lessons learned that that came from that?
Well, the the household waste recycling centre booking process has been a journey in itself. You know, we we created the process initially, then discovered that the server capacity wasn't wasn't great enough to to support the demand. So we as obviously Jadoo had to help us to move our servers to increase capacity. So that was that was a big part of it. We've we've made adaptations to the form, we've opened up more slots, we've made it easier. We're talking about some of the feedback from customers is that actually at the moment, they have to put their details in first and then look at booking a slot. But then if the slot they want isn't available, then they have to go back, you know, it's it's a bit inefficient for the customer. They'd rather see the bookings first, check whether the slot they want is available and then go on to to book that and then provide their details. So we're looking at a continuous improvement for that. Obviously, opening up more slots as we became aware that that operationally they could manage more vehicles on site within the the timeframe and also then looking at opening up weekends. So so just to to make that customer journey a bit better. So it's been it's been a continuous sort of iterative process with lessons being learned on a daily basis and and tweaks being made to continue to improve the process.
Okay, we've had another question from Simon Owen. It sounds like your team does a lean review of existing processes. How do you get successful buy in from management and more importantly, the business teams? We get a lot of resistance as they are adverse to change and also believe service improvement will cause job cuts.
Yeah, it is definitely the most difficult aspect of the of the role. We we tend to work as much as possible on on a kind of being able to prove our results from from previous pieces of work and show that how how that's helped in other teams. So we we get other teams to to help us sell the product, if you like. And it's really about building relationships and building trust. The the quicker we can go in, we do a discovery, which is all about really is for our benefit, enabling us to learn all about that service area, understand what's going on, understand what the real pain points are for for those service area and and show them that we understand their needs and their requirements. So that that first phase is all about that building those relationships, gaining trust as well as us being able to understand, you know, what what's going on in the area and what perhaps might need improving. But yeah, that's that's really the only way is just providing that support and building those relationships and showing people and evidencing how things will be quicker and easier for them in the future, once the new way of working is rolled out.
Okay, I think final question we'll take today and then we'll just kind of wrap up. We had one come in saying, I would like to ask you if Jadoo can be used as a knowledge system. Not sure if that's been directed at us or yourself. Maybe if, have you done anything with knowledge systems through through Jadoo at Swindon? And then I'll I'll tag on to the end of that.
Sarah, is that one that you are aware of?
So I am working on business intelligence and analytics, including predictive analytics, where we will look to take the Jadoo data, but not as in itself as a knowledge based system.
I think what I can probably add is that I know of a few local authorities that have implemented, for example, a Galaxy's site, which has just been completely standalone from, you know, from internet and intranet, for example. And they've used the Galaxy's site effectively as a knowledge centre. So that any specific knowledge from different service areas and departments is is kind of controlled within there. And obviously, it's got all the similar kind of homepages and widgets capabilities, so you can hook into, you know, build some widgets that hook into raw data to present information on that on that Galaxy's site as well. So that could be something that you could explore as another alternative there. Okay, so I've not seen any of the there is actually just a couple of last questions coming. We've probably got time, maybe one more. So Catherine has asked, the PO and invoice process sound great. Are you okay to share the designs on the Jadoo library, please? Sorry if I've missed it.
Yeah, I mean, we've we've always said as an organisation that we're we're happy to share, so I will happy to speak to the team to get that get that sorted.
And she also asked, what's the size of the team? Who would build these new online services and processes? You've done lots.
Well, sorry, what was the question? What's the size of the team?
The team, yeah.
So so basically, we have, when when we've got a full complement of the team, we've got three senior business analysts and three digital process redesigners. So yeah, the the analysts go in and do the initial investigation, understand the problems and and present back potential solutions. And then the the DPRs basically go in and design and develop and deliver on those IT solutions where 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 an IT solution is the is the right solution anyway.
Excellent. Okay, well, that concludes all the questions and I just wanted to send a massive thank you to both Sarah and Sally for your for your presentation and input to that Q and A today. And also thanks to the to the audience for your for your contributions and questions that you've asked here.